Good morning and welcome to our very first Corporate Communities Overview Panel of this new administration, a new term. I thought it would be really helpful because we've got some new members for us, just to do a quick round of introductions if everyone's happy. So I'm Seb James, I'm the councillor for Bowbrook, and I'm the Chair of this committee.
Sam Bastow, Vice Chair and councillor for Evesham North West.
Dave Corbett, I'm in the Performance Services team based at Wildwood, and here to talk about the performance information.
Hi, I'm Sarah McDonald, Senior Finance Business Partner for the corporate areas on ENI.
And I'm Penny Enwin, I'm Head of Corporate Landlord, I'm here to talk about County Hall.
Rachel Hill, I'm the Acting Strategic Director for Economy and Infrastructure. Good morning.
Morning, I'm Hazel Best, I'm the Assistant Director for Legal and Governance.
Morning all, Phil Ruck, Chief Financial Officer.
Morning everyone, councillor Rob Wharton, CMR, Finance and Efficiency.
Good morning, Alan Bales, Independent Councillor for Old Church Division.
Councillor Paul Bennett from Malvern.
Good morning, Andrew Cross, Councillor for Warden and Villages in Worcester.
Good morning, Karen May, councillor for the Clent Hills division, thank you.
I'm Alison Greis, scrutiny officer supporting the panel.
Samantha Morris, interim Democratic Services Manager.
Fantastic, and morning to everyone. So I think we've got some apologies, so for benefit I'm going to refer to Sam as Samantha, and other than Sam, and Sam throughout.
Yes, we've got apologies from councillor Mark Dunkley, and we do not have any substitutes, chairman.
Fab, do we have any declarations of interest or a party whip?
Chairman, just a clarification on this, my colleague to the right is another member of Reform, and Reform is still carrying a vacancy for this panel. Have we made any movement on filling this vacancy, please?
Yes, we have, councillor May, we're in touch with the leader about who the new nomination will be.
Yeah, thank you very much indeed.
Fab, so we'll move on to the minutes. I acknowledge that this is the first meeting of this panel since the election, and therefore none of us were on the previous panel, which met on the 12th of March. Is everyone happy if I sign it as a correct record of the minutes? Even though we went there, yeah, fantastic. And I have already made my first error, but thank you. There's no public participation, I believe, no?
Correct.
Fab, so I'll sign the minutes. So then we move on to item number five, County Hall. I think it's worth noting at this point, after quite lengthy discussion, I think there is, we require further opportunity for more detailed scrutiny. I've spoken to all members at the pre-meet and we're in agreement that there wasn't necessarily sufficient time to scrutinise all documents. Therefore, we have asked for a further scrutiny session at the autumn meeting, and as such, I will say, because we have our wonderful officers here, that if any member has any questions, I think it's appropriate that they ask those questions, but we're not going to do a full deep dive today, and that we are going to have the broader picture. I'll also pass over to Hazel, who I think may say a few things on that one.
Thank you, Chair. So I think you want me to talk about the five days' notice perhaps. So it was always going to be very tight to get this paper to scrutiny today. So the previous paper on options for County Hall was in February of this year, different administration, we obviously had the local elections in May, and the new leader was appointed at the council meeting on the 22nd of May, where the Cabinet members were announced, and we also appointed chairs, vice-chairs to all of the committees. The new administration then made the decision to add this to the forward plan, as had been set out in a recommendation in the February Cabinet report. So this paper will be going to Cabinet next week, on the 17th of July. Papers for that meeting were published on Wednesday this week, being the ninth, which I accept gave this committee less than two days' working notice in which to consider that report. It is a highly technical report, there are 10 appendices, two of which have been redacted to protect that commercial information. As scrutiny, you are entitled to see that redacted information. You will note in that Cabinet report that there is a recommendation that it goes back to the autumn Cabinet, we'll need to fix a date on the forward plan for that, and that is linked to another item which is on the agenda for Cabinet next week, which is on the secondary school sufficiency demand. And one of the recommendations in that report is for a feasibility study on the site for possible use of secondary school for, to meet that sufficiency demand. So what's been proposed today, I think, is that you do further scrutiny, when you will have more time to have digested that technical report you've received today, come up with questions, you can approach officers before that meeting as well for assistance. And the secondary school report and the County Hall report will be going back to Cabinet in the autumn, so we can make the exempt information available to you, and as I say, you can ask questions of officers. The plan will be that it comes to scrutiny well before the Cabinet date, so that you have sufficient time in which to see all of that information, to have that in-depth scrutiny that the committee wishes to do. Thank you.
Fab, thank you for that far more comprehensive summary than I achieved. What I will do though, is perhaps open it up to members to ask some questions that maybe could be responded to when those papers come out, so it can do further. So is there any question from any members? Yeah, councillor Bennett.
Just the comment that I made before everybody walked in, could we have a paper about the history leading up to the technical report? Just a brief one, but as to explain why we've ended up in this situation in the first place? Because I think I would like to know, and I'm sure people that I'm going to have to explain this to, would like to know why we've ended up here, not just what the solution is now.
I'm happy to answer that. So there have been two previous Cabinet reports, the first one being in July 2024, the second one being in February 2025, which set out the context. They will always be referred to in a link at the bottom of the Cabinet papers, but I'm looking at officers, and I think they're happy to do a general summary report to assist scrutiny as well.
Fantastic, thank you.
Fab, yes, no, thank you for that, I think that'd be really, really helpful. Anything else from members?
Yeah, Chair, thank you and good morning. I second what councillor Bennett said, I'm new to this, and it's one of the most important things, I think, that's probably been going to go forward in the near future. There's been a lot of speculation about it, there's a lot of concern, there's a lot of money involved within this, and I think it does need proper scrutiny, and I was concerned that we only got these papers a week before to a lot of technical information, so I think we deserve to our residents that proper scrutiny does take account of this. So I welcome what the officers have said there, giving us plenty of time to scrutinise it, and giving us the right papers to do it, so thank you.
Fantastic, anything, yeah, councillor Cross?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, very encouraging to hear that we are going to get opportunity for scrutiny, and also seeking assurance that the potential uses for County Hall, that that's also up for discussion. I know several residents have questions and concerns about, you know, is it just going to be sold for a cash receipt, or is there an opportunity for invest-to-save type programmes to meet some of our needs? You know, so yes, yes, school, yes, how is the hospital going to expand, all these, all the above, plus a few more. So as long as we have that process to feed those in, that'd be very encouraging, thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. Anything else from members? I noticed we've got some other councillors present, and I didn't know if they wanted to contribute anything to this. Councillor Kent?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I've lived and breathed this for quite a while in different roles, both from the maintenance of the building and also from the economic side, and I think having gone through the papers that I only received a day ago as well, and with the history that is there previously, I think it's absolutely vital that the panel has as much time as possible with also advance, the further information from further reports that obviously will be produced following the Cabinet meeting. Otherwise, you'd have had to end up doing the job twice, you'd have to do it now, and then when there's another report, you'll have to do it again. So I think actually having that information in full will be really beneficial.
Yeah, councillor Birch?
Thank you, Chairman. I think just from the point of view of this committee, I think it's incredibly important when that report comes back, that it's the devil in the detail, really. Decommissioning County Hall is more than just selling it off for a bit of cash, it's whether you sell it off, what you sell it off for, it's whether you sell it with or without planning permission, post or pre-demolition. There's a lot of contingent factors that will, that will mean that we have a variance in terms of what's returned. So I think the committee, the role that you have, is very much scrutinising the details in terms of how we go about doing it, if it does turn out to be decommissioning the site, and going back to Cabinet with a full recommendation ideally.
Fantastic. I will, I noticed councillor Harden's just arrived, and he may have comments on this, I'm sure. So I will pass over it to see if our Cabinet member has anything he'd like to contribute at all.
Absolutely, except what people are saying, it's a big decision for the people of Worcestershire, and they're absolutely fine with the additional scrutiny that you want to put in, so that makes absolutely sense to me.
Fantastic. Was there any other comments then on the County Hall? No. I think it would be noted, and it has been noted at pre-meet, and just to reassure members that there has been comments about things going out into the press, can I just make sure that we are keeping all comments in scrutiny in the proper way, and that we're not sort of running away with a narrative? That would be phenomenal, thank you. What I would do then is, any officer here, just for the County Hall, you are free to enjoy the sunshine and the good weather, I'll just let those go, and then we'll move on to the next item.
Can I just, this building is safe, isn't it? We are okay here, aren't we?
I hope we're okay here, yeah, yeah, 100%. Okay, so moving on to item number six, which is the performance in 2024/25 draft year-end budget monitoring. I'm going to hand over to Dave Corbett for the performance, and then Sarah McDonald for the budget.
Thank you, Chair. Morning, everyone. And the performance information starts on, I think the index page is on page three of your papers, and there's a Power BI version of the report as well, on the performance page of the County Council website. And it covers information up to the end of the last quarter, the end of the financial year. I won't go through in microscopic detail on the indicators, but mindful as well just to pick up a couple of things that were raised at the induction meeting as well. But the indicators that we've got here are basically those that were used in the previous version of this panel's report, so there's certainly the scope to be able to review that, and we've already had, as a result of the induction meeting, a couple of comments, councillor May suggesting around a change in the indicator around agency spend, and we can certainly do that. I won't speak for HR colleagues here as to what the timeline for that would be, but I imagine for the next report, we'd be able to have something in place for that. And as I say, any other sort of meaningful changes to these? Because a lot of them have been in the report for a long time, doesn't mean that they're not important, but sometimes there may not be too much change in them from one quarter to the next. In terms of a couple of the registration indicators, the registration appointments, there's a couple of those are really in simply because it shows about diary management for the registration service, and what they would aim for is that if anybody contacts them to arrange, to register a death, birth, civil partnership, marriage certificates, then they can do so when their appointment's at most suit them. So if there were a problem with that, it would get flagged up straight away, that the performance would dip below 100. But what we tried to do a while ago, as a result of the panel request, was to provide a little bit of context in terms of how many births and deaths are registered, so we can get that information, that's provided by General Register Office. And the little graph on page four, for example, shows the number of births that are registered each month. The important one really for registration, because it is a statutory duty, is around the registration of deaths within five days, and I know we alluded to this at the induction meeting, but it was, it was an indicator that caused, the previous panel, it wasn't a problem for the panel, because they actually engage very well, they want to know if there was anything that they could do to support the service, because when the indicator changed, and the County Council was part of a small group of authorities who were engaged in a pilot project around working with General Register Office, around the reporting of deaths to the Medical Examiner's Office, our performance dipped. The graph will indicate that sometimes the number of deaths registered in five days was down into the 30s percent, more traditionally would be up into the high 80s. We're now with a level playing field again, all deaths in the public area since September, they have to be reported and processed through the Office of the Medical Examiner, so we've got like-for-like comparative figures, and our figures are very good. We're back to above 90%, General Register Office target is actually 95, we've attained it on one occasion, we're usually just below, about 94%, and we're above the comparative figures for the West Midlands region, and also for England as a whole. Again, it's to do a little bit with diary management, and it's also around how much control we have over the process. So the registration engages with GP practices to make sure that they're processing the paperwork as quickly as they can, once they receive anything through from Office for Medical Examiner. We're sort of at the end of that process, if there is any delay, then that will impact on the service's ability to register deaths in five days, but as you can see from the improving percentage, we've got more control over that process now, and we're back to where we want to be, I think. There are seasonal variations, of course, that do come into play, sadly, with deaths, as you might imagine. And also the General Register Office, they don't make any allowances for closed days in the five days calculation, so any weekends or scheduled closures for bank holidays are not exempted, they're included in the five days, so that makes it very difficult for any authority to actually attain the 95% target. But as I say, improving position there. In terms of indicators around communications and also HR, as there are no colleagues from HR, I'm happy to take away any queries on that. I know that at the induction meeting, we mentioned that there's one indicator to do with sickness, will, that's, there were two indicators before, one around long-term sick, and also another around the number of instances of short-term seven days or less sickness absence. We're going to amalgamate those into one, it's one indicator that's just as informative, and I think Sharon and I will get together and we'll make sure that the information that we supply for you, it still gives you the same level of data, but it's just one indicator. And also we mentioned about indicators having targets. Some of those to do with staffing, obviously, it's interesting, should they just be measures, or should there be a target? It's around whether there are stated targets for the level of staffing across the County Council, otherwise it's there for you as an indication of what the full-time equivalent for the local authority is, and also staff turnover rates, which accumulates, it's a cumulative indicator, so it will always appear as a larger figure by the end of the year. And as I say, I'm happy to take away any questions that relate to those. In terms of the communities indicators, they start, I think in your pack, they're on page nine, and libraries, although they offer so many other services, it's visits and issues that tend to have always been the major focus. Visits gives a good indication about how the service is recovering, amazingly, even though five years after post-COVID, the perception was that perhaps service usage for libraries, as with so many other services, might change after COVID. It has our visits figures for last year, where we saw a 1% increase compared with the previous year, we're running at about just below 70% of pre-COVID visit levels, and that's very much in keeping with the national picture. Libraries Connected, which is a national organisation, it used to be the Chartered Institute of Libraries and Information Professionals, they collated data, including from us, from across all sorts of authorities, and it indicates around 70% of pre-COVID levels for current library visits, and around 85 to 90% for library issues, and that includes electronic issues. We're better than that, there are some months where our overall issues total actually exceeds our pre-COVID levels, and I have to be honest, as you'll see from the graph, to do with issues of e-items, our e-stock is very strong, it's a huge contribution now to the number of library issues each month, can be around, 30% in most months are e-issues, and of those, there's a high proportion are e-news papers. All free, all of the things that are on offer are available to the public free of charge, and understandably, e-news papers usually contributes about 40% of each month's electronic issues, and e-audiobooks have overtaken ebooks, probably because they're a bit more mobile, you can take them with you whilst you're doing a lot of other things. So those are very good. And then what also happens with regards to the stock that's available for e-items, is that both locally, our library service, but also Libraries Connected, have been having a long series of discussions with publishers about making more copies of recently published titles, and the most popular titles in the national charts, available to libraries in electronic form. I think there's all sorts of rights implications, and obviously cost to publishers, but those are ongoing discussions, but we still do offer plenty of the most recent titles, and they issue very well. And both our library issue stock for physical items and our electronic ones also include the full range of public health titles. We have a partnership with Public Health called Reading Well, set of books, and that covers everything from young people's mental health and wellbeing, information for carers, for those living with dementia, and also around general health and wellbeing. We get funding from Public Health for that, and that includes electronic titles as well. In terms of the information, I think there was, just to flag up each of the library issue visits figures, they're generated from people counters in each library, the hives is the most sophisticated, when you go into the hive, it's just above the main entrance, and it's a heat-sensitive one. The others are good old-fashioned beam counters, but they give a good level of data quality, there's no real concerns, and libraries are very good at flagging up any concerns they might have if they think that their visits counter is going a bit wonky, but, and we can get them repaired or replaced. And all the other information for libraries is drawn directly from Management Information Systems. The museums figures, museums last year, they, County Museum saw its total go down, it was mainly, I think, the summer weather, very different to how it is now, so some of the midsummer totals were a bit lower than in previous years. But it's very seasonal, they'll get very good figures usually in August, when the Hartlebury Castle Preservation Trust runs events and activities as well, and we work in partnership with them. The other museums, in museums Worcestershire are both run by Worcester City Council, Atleti City Museum and Art Gallery, and the Commandery, and of course, there are big changes for both of those with the Yeomanry Museum and the Regimental Museum and the move to the Commandery, so a lot of work going on there. But County Museums figures, they'll, they've started a new financial year actually strongly, and higher than in the same three months of last year. And really, there's a couple of other things, the panel, previously we looked at the bikeability information, really just on the take-up of that, the old cycle proficiency many years ago, and again, it's run in partnership with various organisations, and they're, apart from the various levels of bikeability, the key one, and it's separated out with some commentary, I think it's pages 16 and 17 of your pack, is the Level Two, and that's where children are given a bit of on-road training. So there's a lot of take-up on that, particularly in this quarter, the usual pattern is to see very good figures, as we saw last financial year, in the April to June, July period. And then there are other periods of the year where there'll be a dip, of course, when we're reporting through the summer holidays, but then the service does run bikeability for families as well. And the service also covers inspections of crossing patrols at schools, and does other work with West Mersey Police on road safety and driver awareness for young people. But as you see, the figures for the last couple of years for bikeability have been very good. Again, it's a return to sort of pre-COVID levels really, after understandably a slightly slow start in the wake of the pandemic. I hope that's a sufficient level of detail without being too boring, I'm happy to take any questions though.
Yeah, that was great, thank you, thank you so much for that. I'll open it up to members, yeah, councillor Bennett?
Yeah, the staff turnover figures, the columns, they seem to fit into a financial year pattern, which is quite bizarre really, because staff turnover should be a bit more random than that. Can you explain why there is a kind of year-on-year pattern, exactly the same virtually, through that kind of stuff?
That will be actually, councillor, that's a good point, it's one of the things that I can change in the report, because the way it's reporting, the bar graph, it's actually cumulative, so each quarter, the figure's invariably going to go up, because it's adding in. So what I will do, we'll get that changed, and so you can see something, we'll show both each individual quarter, but also that overall pattern.
Yeah, because it looked unreal, it looked like you literally sacked everybody at the end of the financial year because you've overspent or something like that, and that's not the case.
It's a good point, and it might well flag up that there are some patterns within that, so it's certainly something that, probably with a bit of better illustration, and probably input from Sharon's now, we can show that, then yes, you're right, we can probably see if there is a genuine pattern developing there.
Fab, thank you. Councillor May?
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, Mr Corbett, for taking us through this report. In terms of the sickness rates, I'd like to see the actions that sit behind this graph, please, and I know, I'm conscious of the fact that Sharon's not here today, but I do think we need to form a narrative about what we're doing. Our officers are our greatest asset, and we need to enable them to be, fulfil their roles, but also to be fit and healthy. Understand much of this will be around adult social care and musculoskeletal issues that we have, but what actions are we taking, please, to address this? Thank you.
Yes, previously there have been more detailed updates given for the panel with regards to the actions that's been taken, and what possible causes there might be other than what might be expected, either seasonal variations, or is there some issue around, as you say, an increase in one particular type of ailment, which might be to do with posture at work and workstation assessments and so on? So yes, absolutely, we can include that more detailed information in the commentary, but also, obviously, if Sharon were here, she'd be able to give you more detailed information. I think as well, in the past, there's been the focus on any seasonal patterns, and also any other, not quirks, but any changes to the makeup in the County Council that would have changed things, so obviously in the year that we've just ended the financial year, the reintegration of children services would obviously have a particular impact, because those figures would have been brought back in, but absolutely, take your point, councillor, and we can provide more information in the report.
Can I just come back with a supplementary, please, Chairman? So understand now we've amalgamated the short and the long-term sickness, but it's actually taken our average over what our target is. I do think we need some narrative around the long-term sick, because that completely skews the picture, please. Thank you.
Sorry, yeah.
After Paul Bennett mentioned the staff turnover rate, is that information compiled in the same way as the sickness rates? Because you can see the pattern there.
Yes, there'll be information with the sickness rate that gives the, if I go back to the graph, I think the individual, the quarterly figures and then a cumulative overall total, isn't it? I think if I go back to that. But yes, again, that could be shown in a different way that provides the granular detail. I think what we've got in terms of the actual quarterly information, if I just go to the right graph. Yes, so there's the individual data for each of the months. And then it builds up into the quarterly, end of quarter periods and then a cumulative. So what I'll do, I'll take that one away. I've got a feeling that what we had before would have been more informative. I think it was changed at some point during the life of the previous panel. And what we can do is to show both a cumulative, so you can again conceive if there are any dips in or seasonal patterns there, but also the individual information around what's happening within each month and each quarter. I don't think, unless there's been a detailed report provided, that we've done it by service. I think there have been one or two more detailed deep dives around the service. So I'll probably keep it an overall figure for corporate level, but provide you with both the cumulative figure and also those quarterly figures.
Fab. Councillor Bennett.
Yeah, I just, I forgot to mention this. Obviously, we're looking backwards with some of this stuff, but with local government reorganisation, yay. There are going to be new trends which come into, and also worrying things which we need to plan against. And I know we're scrutiny, but at the same time, it'd be nice for us to try and support staff on that. Because I know from the district council situation, I'm worried that services might be affected because people might have to go to other jobs. Who knows what's going to happen? We've got a very, very poor plan at the moment as to how this is all going to work out. How does, are you actually involved in a strategic plan with all of the different contingencies on that in terms of making sure that staff turnover doesn't massively increase? And how would that work, you know, in terms of for us to be able to see what's going to happen in the future a little bit?
In terms of the HR side, I wouldn't be involved on that side. Although as part of the, for both this report, but also in the new corporate performance and risk management system, there's commentary that's provided, and that would be provided by the responsible officers. And in there, what we're asking particularly with regards to the new system is it will include factors that have affected, but also are likely to affect performance in the future. So there's that element there. It's not directly answering your question, councillor, but from my own, one of my own areas that I cover with regards to libraries, for example, there will be detailed planning around, based on past performance, what happens if we reduce a particular number of computers in libraries? What's the usage level likely to be? So there's a little bit of scenario planning. We've had, I think, I can't remember, it was in the induction for this panel or one of the other panels, discussion about the influence that AI might have in terms of being able to look at various scenarios. At the moment, it's certainly something we're looking at, I think, as a performance services team. But it's still the case that what we're using is the information we've got at the moment for services and then planning on the basis of that. The HR side, I certainly wouldn't necessarily have the knowledge on that. But I'd imagine that there's plenty of, you know, planning that goes in based on, for example, the implication around the move to Wildwood originally, or other changes in service provision.
Fab, I think I'll bring Phil in as well.
Just to give you some assurance in terms of the planning for LGR, there's a delivery group by the council. So there's work streams, there's finance, there's legal that Hazel and I are responsible for. Sharon's responsible for workforce, so we're doing that planning around that. And there's a members seminar on Tuesday that will take you through some of the detail. But you're right, in terms of particularly some of the services, probably more so not adults, childrens, more the central services, where those risks there, we have to manage those risks because when we go through to local reorganisation, you've got to close the county council and start that new one or two authorities in terms of that. So there are risks around service provision and the retention of staff during this difficult time. Because let's be clear, all councils have been, and the proposals have been disbanded and a new council or councils will be thing. So there are risks that we are managing actively through that, through the work streams.
It's just that everybody's going to have to apply for their jobs again, kind of almost, isn't it? You know, it's so difficult to know what the heck is going to be the final structure on all of this across the country. And that it's not just here, it's the other effects of other councils. Maybe they can offer a better deal for certain people and they will leave or whatever. It's all that uncertainty. I'm very relieved to hear that because I didn't know about that.
Fab, thank you. Yeah, thank you for reassuring us. I think that's helpful. Councillor Cross.
Thank you, Chair. I note with a little concern, there's quite a significant drop in museum visits, the visits and also the income. And are we confident that we can turn this round?
In terms of the income side, with Hannah Perrott not here today, Hannah said that she'd pick up any direct queries. So if I may, I'd come back with a direct answer through Hannah for that, the finance side. In terms of the visits side, there's certainly the usual pattern of summer events that are being taken. And it is very much dependent on the weather. Their figures for the last couple of months have actually been very good. I think last month's was over 2,000, 2,500, I think. And they would expect to see normally very good figures around their offer in July and August. And they're promoting more a little bit now to do with the civil war history of the county museum as well, where it was used as a sort of last defence, I think, by the Royalists in the civil war. So that there's, there are several events on that side. So I think they're always trying to review the number and the pattern of events they have, the content of them. They've obviously got a number of collections at the museum that are longstanding, including the wagons there. So they're always promoting those, but they are certainly always looking to review and add to their events pattern. There's also the trails around the site as well about the, I know there's been a little bit in the information there about what's been posted on the website in terms of the trails and the walks and picnic site areas around Hartlebury itself. And part of the monitoring with that is, it's not going to guarantee you that you've got extra people coming in, but there's the monitoring about responses to any articles that go on to social media. And we look at the social media response there and the reach. So it's one indication, but the proof of the pudding is in the visits. So I think at the moment, they're certainly, early on, it's a little bit better than the last financial year.
Thank you, and I have a quick supplementary, just so following on from yesterday's question from councillor Amos about rural skills and crafts and heritage, heritage craft training. So whether, for example, there's opportunity for increasing the blacksmithing and other sort of rural heritage craft training to widen the scope and whether that's an avenue being explored. Thank you.
Certainly check with Hannah on that, we can get, and Philippa Tinsley, of course, as the overall, the Museums Worcestershire manager. Come back to you, councillor.
Thank you. Can I just jump in before I go to councillor May? How are the, I assume the visits are just, there is a mechanism for capturing. I'm just noting in January this year and January last year, there were both 127. I don't know if the same group of people arrive every January as some sort of pilgrimage to our museum. But I was just wondering how we capture the number?
Yes, for museums, it's done through the ticketing system that they have. They do have other systems of checks as well to, with good old fashioned clicker comes in. But the ticketing principles where people enter the museum is very detailed. The County Museum, like the Commandery, is closed in each January to the public. They do take school visits, school booking still. The reason that both museums shut, but particularly County Museum, is they found in previous years that there isn't as much demand for people to go if it's a particularly damp and dreary January day. But also, it gives them a chance to look at conservation and preservation of collections and the buildings themselves, and also in certain cases to move collections around so that you haven't got people come back and say, well, everything was in the same place as it was last year. And to also allow for the moving in of any new items and new collections. So it was a pure coincidence, a number of schools visits that they had, and it just coincidentally happened to be 127 in both.
Councillor May.
Yes, thank you very much indeed. A million pounds of public health ring fence grants goes into the libraries. And I note the narrative around what goes on there, but we're not, I'd like to know how we are measuring the outcome, the outcomes from that investment, please. Because books aren't just what libraries are about. It's about that preventative agenda that we know and understand so very clearly now, more of the positives that come from it. But I note the comment from the Cabinet Member for Health yesterday when she said, we've inherited a tricky situation in terms of health. The public health ring fence grant is £33 million and is rigged fenced. The question I'm asking is, how are we measuring the outcomes from that investment, particularly into libraries? Thank you.
Libraries undertake, and they're just about to do one, I think, customer voice surveys of users because that will actually pick up people who visit the library for other reasons. It's easy for us to account the number of visitors and then we can actually identify the number of different people who've borrowed a book, for example, or used a computer. But all of the people who use, who attend just to use the libraries as a safe space, a warm space in the winter, or to attend events, whatever event it might be, whether it's any of the children's and families' one summer reading challenge events. We have events monitoring forms, but how do we identify the outcomes? In library service, the customer voice survey includes questions around the benefits that people get from attending the library. So for example, it will ask them about any impact on their mental and physical health. Do they feel more a part of the community as a result of attending an event or visiting their library? Do they feel, for example, that as a result of attending a connect group, whether it's NIT and NATA, or one of the toddler groups or story time, does that help their mental health and make them feel closer and tighter as a family? So there's those sort of outcomes rather than the pure outputs that is monitored as part of that. And in terms of anything to do with Reading Well, there is monitoring of that about what people got out of borrowing the Reading Well titles. In terms of that, the proof of the pudding, that probably is with the number of titles that are borrowed and the frequency. But yes, there are certainly attempts through, all that we can do is surveys of how people feel, you know, once they've visited the library, what they feel that the outcome is for them. And it is quite, I think there are nine separate outcomes that are used. And we've got consistent historical data going back over some years from each of the customer voice surveys. And I know that, I think Carol Brown and Kate Holford were just having a discussion the other day about some of the questions to be included in the latest survey.
Can I come back with a supplementary, please, chairman? Very quickly.
I think Phil has a little bit of data to add, and then obviously.
Just to provide you some assurance, councillor May as well, in terms of the public health ring fence grant, the director of public health and myself have to sign off an assurance statement at the end of the year to make sure that the grant that we receive, because it is a ring fence grant, complies with the conditions and that's the outcome framework as well. So that will be, Dr McNally will sign that off and then I would sign the financial bit, just to give that assurance around that the grant is used for public health outcome purposes.
Thank you very much indeed for that assurance. I'd like to see where we sit in terms of benchmarking with other county authorities around the country, please. Thank you.
In terms of that, Chair, there's information from the more statistical side, the pure, the outputs through the Libraries Connected. And we get information, we used to get a lot more information actually from the annual public library statistics that SIFRA run. Fewer and fewer authorities complete that now. In terms of the outcomes information, there's, it's a little bit more tricky probably to compare it. We'd probably have to go through, Carol Brown attends West Midlands Libraries Connected group meetings and there are discussions there. And earlier this year, it was end of April, we submitted some information to Libraries Connected at West Midlands as part of an exercise that they're doing. And they're trying to bring everything together. And we'll get, we should get some results from that shortly. That includes attendance at events and also outcomes information as well.
Thank you. Councillor Bales, you had a question?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, there's some questions and clarifications. I've got about five different topics here. Do you want me to go through them one by one? Am I allowed to go through five topics or do you want me to put them all together?
I think it'd be good if you just give an indication of which page you're referring to and go through them in sequence.
Page six. Well, the first one is the staff engagement regarding on that. One is, we talk about a survey which we've undertaken. Have we got an indication of what the results of the surveys are and how they relate to the current activities in there? Because it's all nice to say we've got green and we are communicating, but we seem to have a survey. We don't seem to have, I don't seem to have sight of it. I'm sure it's somewhere. The second one is page seven on the graph in particular. We seem to, on full time equivalents, have a jump at December 24. Just clarification of what that is, I notice at June 2020, I suspect that was Covid, but then it's gone up slowly, then we get a large jump. Do you want to take those two or shall I carry on?
Did you want to come back on those two and then we'll pop back to you, yeah?
Councillor, the first one I'd have to, certainly you're right, there's all the detailed surveys. And I know that previously, Richard Taylor would present an overview of each year's customer, sorry, customer voice, staff survey, yes, the voice survey. So we can get the more detailed information there from, and find the actual source documents on that. In terms of the jump in December, that is purely and simply to do with the children's first coming back into the authority. So that jump there, all those full time equivalents figures, it has slightly skewed it, as you say. So it's, we've made the note around that coming back in. If it's actually taken out, then it would give you a false picture, of course, of the true, the true level.
Just then going on to sickness rates, regarding that, I notice now, and it's answered my question. Thank you councillor May and councillor Bennett, that they are cumulative. And it's only after we saw it, but they are annual cumulatives. So I think we need that in there. But on that, so what actions are we taking? And I think councillor May's gone into that, and I don't think I got, we got an answer from that. What actions are we taking because it has gone up? And are we going to put a deep dive into why this happens? It's lovely having, and it worries me because our RAG assessment is red. And that's a, to me, and as councillor May knows at my opening scrutiny, any red flag to me, we need to look at. And why is it happening? There's nothing here about why it's happening. We've got future activities, continue to monitor and report. That means nothing to me. That's just nice words. But why is it happening and what are we going to do about it? And then just going on to cost of agency staff, which is another one of my pets. Whilst it's not a rag and we don't have to do anything, what are we trying to achieve? So we've got lovely results here, but what are we trying to achieve? What are the measures and how are we performing with that? So it's lovely having a nice graph here of our agency staff. But what are we trying to achieve? Where are the measures? And I've got one after that. Thank you.
I think it would be worth perhaps to save Dave's, sort of going over again to ask Sharon Booth for a follow up report on those questions. I think she'd be able to give us a bit more of a fleshed out sort of response, if that's okay with you. And we'll get that circulated amongst members. And Phil, yeah?
Just to give you a assurance, the scrutiny panel looked at agency across the whole council in, I think, Sam, remind me, if it was November, October, November time, so there was a scrutiny panel that covered children's, adults, the corporate centre and environment. So there was a deep dive that scrutiny undertaken around that, around our performance of agency staff. So I'm sure we can circulate that report to the members of the panel, if that's helpful.
Yeah, and back to you.
Okay, thank you. And I think it's important we have that. Just finally on bikeability, I know councillor May will smile at me on this one. It's great, it's all about schools. And I think that's brilliant that we're actually getting the children trained up. Because if we're going to put in cycle lanes, which we have done, we've got to make sure they're used. Whether children are actually trained to use the cycle lanes and on road cycle things is a different issue. Again, question on that, are we looking also within this to look at how the public are trained? Because if we're investing in cycle lanes, we've got to make sure that all users can do it, no matter what purpose they use. And is that what purpose they use. And is there any linkage between the children's bikeability and the school travel plans we put in place? In other words, is it paying off? And have we linked it to the school travel plans to make sure that the schools are ensuring the investment we've made in bikeability is actually paying off?
In terms of the linkages, that would be one that I think Hannah and probably through Rachel Datlin and Jackie Phillips could provide much more detailed information. I know on the, I've just got to actually hear the bikeability homepage, it gives a lot of information around family training but also adult cycle training. I think there's already been a couple of sessions this year and there's, in fact, there's one that's scheduled for the 2nd of August as well. So a little bit more of trying to expand it and also make it more of a family oriented thing as well. So that some of the, I think in previous years, recently, there were a couple of sessions that were run during summer, all places on County Hall, in around the area there. But certainly, I'll refer to Hannah in terms of the level of expertise there, but you're right, there are certainly linkages around, it's probably maybe linked with Department for Transport Guidance, but certainly there are the events that take in both children and families, parents outside the school environment.
Fab.
Sorry, Chair, just as I say before I finish, there was nothing there about school travel plans and linkages. Are we getting our money, money's worth from this training? So I don't think that was quite answered, Chair.
We can take that away and come back. So link in with transport, Dave, and also Hannah's team on bikeability. We'll bring something back.
Thank you for that. Councillor Cross?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you Alan, for sort of, it was interesting, you're raising the points just that I'd just prepared on the screen as well. So that's great. I guess what I'm really seeking is clarity on, we have this sort of focus on bikeability as the topic, but it's never going to be enough just by itself, you know, with the modal shift that we need to achieve. If we want to sort out the problem of traffic congestion, the, one of the big barriers to people actually walking and cycling is obviously active travel infrastructure. So we've got other elements we need to bring in. I think it's more of a performance monitoring of how are we towards the government's stated target of percentage of journeys to be made by active travel means. This brings in bus services, of course, as well, and other public transport. But, you know, I remember from back in 2000 or so, there was the choose how you move, you know, marketing mantra. And we seem to have less and less option now compared to then. So perhaps if it's, is it within our gift, is it within our scope to take a more holistic view of the issue of active travel and, yes, cycling. But this also includes, for example, training of drivers and public messaging about the 2022 changes to highway code that prioritise vulnerable road users. Things like also the removal of metal barriers at, along shared use paths and replacing them with bollards, which is actually now compliant with government legislation or guidance. Whereas these metal barriers are, some of the ones photographed in LTN 120, the Cycling Infrastructure Guide of how not to do it, were actually taken in Warrnambool villages, which, you know, is like, hey, I know where that is. So there still are a few people who say, wait, these serve a good purpose, but actually it reinforces the mentality that the driver is king versus actually it's pedestrians and cyclists who have the priority in the legal framework. And so our infrastructure needs to accommodate that. And it's about providing choice because it's never a matter of people only doing one mode of transport, but about having the choice and providing the choice. Because otherwise, we're going to be stuck with traffic congestion, you know, parking issues, all these, all these problems, also air quality are affected by that as well. And if we have that scope of widening our focus, that'd be very welcome. Thank you.
Can I just, just before I bring Rachel, just redirect you perhaps to the Environment Committee, which I think that sits more in within rather than the scope of this one. But I'm sure, Rachel.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Cross. Absolutely, it does, does sit very well within the scope of the Environment Overview and Scrutiny Panel. And from my recollection, I think active travel is certainly as part of the, one of the items that is on the forward plan to be considered by that, by that panel. I don't think we've got a specific date for that or necessarily the scope for that, but certainly that's something to be considered and we will be bringing a report on active travel. We have done updates in terms of activities taken, but I take your point, it doesn't necessarily bring it all together in terms of linking in with bikeability and some of those other things. Thank you.
Rachel's correct. And we've also got local cycling and walking infrastructure plans and councillor involvement on the Environment Panel Work Programme as well, linking in with that.
Fab. I'll take question, I've got Dan, councillor Dan Birch now, I was wanting to ask a question.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, it's just in regards to the library figures. So the library figures, for example, for Droywich Old Church and with, will all show that there's been an increase in visits between 2023 and 24 through to 24th, 25. But there has been a decrease in terms of the library issues. Now, obviously, I'm aware that our libraries are obviously, as councillor May has said, for far more than books and people go in there to meet with groups and to, and for all the rest of it. And more people are using the eBooks and e-magazines and e-news papers that were introduced over the past few years. But are we keeping an eye on whether the stock that we are, we have within our libraries is meeting the needs of people in terms of the fact that if people are taking out less books despite the fact that there's more visits, does that mean that we perhaps don't have the right level of stock to keep enticing people to take books out?
Thank you, councillor. There's regular stock management and stock monitoring that goes on. Chris Nibb, who deals with stock orders and the Aces with the providers, Peters for Askew, I think. But what we do, I'm actually involved in that, we provide reports on most issued titles, also the most requested titles, or they're called holds nowadays, but they used to be reservations. Have we got enough titles in stock at each library of the number of titles that are in most demand? Now, a lot of those, as you might imagine, would be ones that have just been published, Richard Oldsmun, for example. And we'll monitor, have we got enough? So that will then precipitate whether the libraries, if there's one library, for example, are there too many copies of one particular title at one library and not enough at another, where there's been demand, and that can be then moved around using the courier system to ensure that the demand is met. So you're right, there's, there is the need to keep monitoring stock, the electronic ones as well. But we do have plenty of things in place to do regular monitoring of what's issuing, what's not issuing. So there are dead stock reports that are produced for items that haven't issued over a set period of time. What we tend to do now is if I'm asked by a library to run one of those, or the library staff, there are some of them that can run the report themselves, they'll usually look back at about a year or so, just over a year, and they'll exclude from that any titles they bought in that time. So we're then looking at items that are just hardly issued, say, over the last couple of years. And those can either be weeded out, or it might simply be that they've, people didn't know they were there. So you can try and promote them, put them in a different part of the library. If they still don't issue, then that's part of the stock rotation process. They can be retired, if you like. And then there's also another look at whether, are we buying the right items if they're new? There's a report that exists which is called, it's not a very nice title, Straight to Dead it's called. It's where books that have been bought, have they not issued in the first six months or year, I think, of, after they were purchased? Again, if not, why not? Is it simply the case they're at the wrong library, they're not being promoted well enough, or it's something that, you know, just hadn't met the taste of the people at that library? If that were the case, then of course, that's a question to be taken up then with suppliers.
Fab. Councillor Hardman?
Thank you very much, Chair. And as some members that have attended this committee is, I have great interest in bikeability, rather strangely. What I just wanted to check is, have we made any progress yet on changing the DFT guidance who send us the grant, which I believe discriminates against a considerable number of pupils in this county? Because what we do is, we charge independent schools, very few who take up the training, a higher rate, and then we use it to cross subsidy. And the excuse I got, I have to say, when, you know, sat next door to me was the cabinet member, was this is DFT guidance. Well, isn't it about time that we stopped following DFT guidance and did what is right for all the children of Worcestershire? I suspect it's going to be a question for the cabinet member rather than the officers, but if you could reaffirm that the, there has been no change in the guidances for the grant.
Certainly, I think the statement is still on the county council website around that. So I, there's been no change, councillor.
Fab. Thank you, councillor Hardman. Is there a supplementary?
Well, there is. I just wanted to move on to the reassurance that we need from, for, from the officers over the use of the public health grant in relation to libraries. Because although there isn't a library in my division, those who go to Upton, which I know is partially supported by the public health grant, or indeed Welland, enjoy the facilities there. Now, I was extremely concerned by the cabinet member for health's response yesterday to a question about the public health grant, because the public health grant is ring fenced. And therefore, the assurance that the officers give is absolutely vital to keep the regional body of the directors back. But I did worry that this would be on a list of things that she wanted to reassign the funding to, even though the funding is unchanged. So I do think this reassurance, I mean, it's more of a comment than a question because they were looking a bit perplexed over there. But it's something that I suspect we will be taking a great interest in moving forward. Because I suspect that if this grant is withdrawn, there will be library closures.
Thank you, councillor Hardman. I'm sure we could have a written response reaffirming what's been said today. And I do look forward perhaps to tandem ride, we can go and collect that response together. Are there any other questions on this item before we move on? Yep, Sam?
Yeah. So this is in regard to the libraries. Some libraries since 1920, 19/20 to 24/25 have, they've got about the same or increased numbers. I've noticed that Evesham has got about 40% of the same visitors. What have the libraries that have kept the same level or increased done so well that Evesham might not have done?
I think if, one of the aspects would be where some libraries, of course, Evesham is one of them now, actually libraries unlocked, which of course, certain libraries, there are nine libraries that have got libraries unlocked, which offers extra opening hours. So that's a big help, of course, to be able to get extra people in. Other libraries, I think there's, there'll be certain ones of a similar size that have probably performed around the St Bromsgrove, though, tends to have good visitor figures. But I'm not sure that there's anything that Evesham hasn't really done. I could go away, raise it with Carol Brown to see if there's anything that she would say is specific to Evesham in terms of, and the Evesham cluster as a whole, which includes obviously Pershore and Broadway as well. But generally speaking, the libraries, they do the same in terms of promoting their presence on social media and also the way that their events are promoted. And they'll have the same regular events. So they'll know what works and what doesn't. So all of them will obviously offer a lot of events around rhyme time, bounce and rhyme, story time, summer reading challenge as well, and the take up of that. But I'm not aware that there's anything particularly that Evesham probably hasn't done. So I defer to Carol on that one and can come back with a proper response for you.
Cool. If there was nothing else, we'll move on then to the forecast financial position. I believe that Sarah is that, oh, it's Phil.
If that's okay with members, I'll take the overview and then Sarah will take the detail. So just sort of give a little bit more context around the financial position. So obviously, you've got in your packs the overview of the out term position and obviously the report looks back on the financial year. But first and foremost, I'd like to thank both the Audit and Governance Committee and the Pensions Committee for reviewing our published accounts. I'll carry on. In terms of that, so the overspend for the council was 6.2 on a £433 million budget.
Might be a mic issue. I don't know if yours is on the?
Mic's on. The mic, the mic was on. Okay. So the council overspent by 6.2 million on a £433 net budget, which was about 1.4%. And that was a real huge improvement from quarter three to the end of the financial year. So in the second slide, it's got the detail in some of that. It's largely one-off, but I think the organisation did respond to the financial challenge that it was facing us in terms of pressures in adults and children's and home school transport. So pleasing position. I think the end of the year, general fund balances increased from 16.1% to 19.2% of the budget, so around about 4.4% of general balances in terms of that. So moving, moving forward. I think the slides in terms of going forward has got, and slide three's got the variance between the out term position and the quarter three position. So members can have a look at that. And there's a detailed link in terms of that to take that forward. And I think slide four's got an overview of the savings programme. So this was the largest programme that the council's undertaken for significant years. And you can see the greens, there's some red in terms of that, but 72% of the savings were achieved, which is a, is a, is a good outcome. Some of those other areas were impacted on children and some areas that we didn't do. But some of those are in progress for the next financial year. Because when you look at the 25, 26 budget, the recurrent areas of those, there's 4.2 added to the 8.6 million savings we have in the budget for this year moving forward. So, so there's a bit of a narrative around that. And in the cabinet report, there is a table around the ones, savings that weren't delivered in terms of that. Moving forward as well, you've got slide five, in terms of that is our overview of the general balances, so of our specific reserves. And we've obviously had conversations this morning about the public health ring fence grant. So our reserves were 105 million and the end of the year at 93.7 million in terms of that. But some of those reserves are, can only be used for specific purposes, public health, insurance, some of those are schools balances. So you look halfway down the table, it's the risk reserve that is, is what we have to meet, to impact on the medium term financial plan. And you, and members will be aware, we use 15 million to balance the 25, 26 budget. I think just to highlight as well, in moving forward a little bit, the pressures on the budget moving forward was because changes in the national insurance rates, that members will be aware, that went to 15%. The council got a grant for our staff. But when you look at the services that we procure in the, for adults, children's, we weren't given any additional funding for that and the national living wage as well. So that's a pressure coming forward that was not funded by the government, which sort of impacts on the pressures that the council has moving forward. I think finally, in terms of capital position, as we said at council yesterday, we've spent 97 million. There was a number of slippages in terms of that. But when you look at the capital programme of that 97 million, 42 million is funded by government grants, 2.7 for capital receipts, some of section 106 and some of reserves. So not all of that is, about 32 million was funded by temporary or long-term borrowing in terms of that. So that's, and the slippage in the capital programme did actually benefit effectively some of the treasury management activities that we had during the year. So that made the overspend not as great as it would do. So from, from a, when you look on the table, it's helpful in terms of that position moving forward. And before I just close and hand over to Sarah, I just want to just touch on looking forward in terms of the financial position. So there was a comprehensive spending review announced on the 11th of June, which was, which was helpful. And now we've got what's called Fair Funding 2.0. So that, that looks, the government was out to consultation at this time. So we will get in December, three years' funding. So we'll know exactly what we're going to get and we'll work and I'll update members when we get that. But that's going to, going to be a challenge, particularly when you look at the areas that will still continue to be a pressure for this council, which is adults and children's, social care, which everyone members will be know, you can't just turn the tap off. So if a child or an adult under the Care Act or children need support, we need to provide that service in terms of that. So moving forward, so that is in one area. And finally, dedicated schools grant's not in here, but I think it is an area that the council should be aware of. We ended the year with a 98.2 million deficit. There's a white paper coming out in the autumn around that. So that's see the government's response. But the statutory override that keeps it off our balance sheet at the moment, it's been extended to March 28. So we need a solution to this because effectively, the government are not funding us for some of the duties that we have. And that is, frankly, it's not, it's not right. It needs to be a response to that in terms of that. And that does impact on our financial position because obviously we're spending money and it impacts on our treasury management activities because we've got a service in a deficit. And we would have got more money in terms of treasury management activity. And we would have got more money in terms of treasury management activities. So that 6.2 million overspend would have been less if the government had funded DSG. So just a bit of context around the complexity around where we go in going forward. But it is helpful in terms of the three year settlement when we'll come back with members. But it's just to show that how complex the county council's business is as a billion pound organisation and the interrelationships with capital, with revenue and those demand led services that do, we have to provide for residents of Worcestershire. So I'll pause there. If you want to do questions on that, then Sarah can probably...
Might be easier to do questions on that part. Yeah. Councillor Bennett?
Yeah, it was just some of the abbreviations. For us new, we don't actually understand them. I've had to Google quite a few. So in terms of presentation for when, you know, new councillors come on, could you just, you know, put an asterisk and explain exactly what that kind of WLEP meant or whatever, you know what I mean? Because some of them are pretty technical. And obviously, I can see all the work there. But from my point of view, being new to this council, I don't understand what some of the titles actually mean. Yeah?
WLEP is the Worcestershire Lapboard. Yeah, yeah, okay. And I, yeah, we'll do that. There are a lot of abbreviations and MRP and all the others. So we'll make sure we'll put that in the report.
Fab. Yeah, councillor May?
Thank you very much indeed. And thank you to Mr Rook for taking us through this. As a rule of thumb, when I'm talking to parishes and to communities, I talk about over 70% of the budget is spent on 2.5% of the population. At the full council meeting yesterday, when it was being portrayed as a very muddy water and our financial position not strong, when I had to look at our level of reserves, we are nowhere near 114 territory. We've taken the exceptional financial support, the EFS, as a safety measure. Would you agree with that statement, please?
It's tricky. The legislation for a 114 is very, very, very tricky. It's difficult. I would say in terms of the fair funding review, at this point, we've got exceptional financial support. We'll have an assurance review from SIFRA later in the year. At all costs, we have to avoid a 114. With our cash position, we've not got a problem at all about paying anybody. And if you look at the exceptional financial support position, exceptional means to me is one or two. There are 39 authorities in EFS. So just to give a little bit of context around that. But local government finance is under severe pressure, particularly those upper tier authorities, particularly with the DSG. So at this point, no, no, but we have to have plans in place. So one of the areas that we'll have to look at as a council is the capital programme. We're going to have to look at that very carefully across members or across the whole council around that and understand the budget process this year is going to be really challenging. My view is section 151, we have to have budget cafes, budget seminars for all members so we can understand what the implications we make around that. So we get full transparency around that process because there are going to be some difficult decisions to make. But at this point in, at the point in time, we've got EFS that we have to use. I'm not considering a 114 at this point in time.
Thank you for that clarification. If I can just come back. So we are still at the stage where over 70% of our budget is spent on 2.5% of the population in Worcestershire. Am I correct?
You're correct in terms of that. So yeah, in terms of where you look at the adults and children, and there's services that we have to provide from a statutory purpose.
Thank you for that clarification because I just want to draw a line in the sand. Heavy is the head that wears the crown. And on the 11th of July 2025, we are in, our legacy as an administration as Conservatives is that we are in a comparable but stronger position than the rest of our county councils across this country. And we've taken actions to prevent and protect those most vulnerable in society. I sat there thinking that the resident that was sat watching the cabinet meeting yesterday would have had a totally different picture. And I just wanted to get that clarification out there. We look after the most vulnerable in our society and it's right and proper that we do so. Thank you, Mr Rook.
Just be sure I'm clear with all members. I think from the position of where we are, the issue is around. So when you've looked at some of the authorities that are in EFS, I won't name them, but some of them have invested in shopping centres, solar panels. We have not done anything in terms of that. The pressures that we, when I went to government to request exceptional financial support, were just the demand pressures on children's, adults and home school transport. So when you look at the budget like a couple of years ago, we had a structural deficit that we've resolved up to a certain point. So our overspend this time last year was 19.1 million. It was 6.2. So we've addressed some of those challenges. But the challenge is coming forward is those funding for local government as a whole. So effectively, the government, so the fair funding review, I'm really looking forward to looking at the detail in terms of that and saying that we funded to provide these statutory services on a basis. And at the moment, I don't think any council is, the pressures, when you look up and down in county councils, there are pressures in children and adults across the board.
Thank you. And I'm hoping maybe a recommendation that I'm gauging is perhaps the cabinet member could feed back to you if there is a blockage from central government of things not being covered, maybe that they can, you know, put their hand in their pocket to make sure that our coffers are aligned. I think I've got councillor Hardman and then councillor Bennett.
Thank you. Thank you very much. As our chief financial officer has very clearly laid out, I think, the challenges. Now, yesterday at Bull Council, I did ask about fairer funding 2.0. And I'm pretty sure, I hope I'm not breaking some sort of secret omata amongst county treasurers. But my guess is that the Society of County Treasurers will have done a fair amount of modelling on what the proposed changes would mean to us. And I think as a panel, it would be interesting if you can give us some sort of flavour of the financial hit. I mean, I had a quick guess, and I have to say, I'm not as clever or indeed as good as Spredchit, that possibly the loss of grant would be somewhere in the region of about £40 million. Am I sort of somewhere in the right area? And that would add to the already slightly challenging position in that we are using, of course, reserves to the tune of about £7 million and we have an overspend. So next year's budget, as you rightly point out, will be extremely challenging. And the bit that worries me about the administration is of course that, as far as I can see, it just sits around whistling Dixie, frankly.
Yeah, thank you councillor Hardman. I completely agree. We have done some early modelling and we're just refining that at the moment. So what we have at the moment in Fair Funding 2.0 is the government have looked at the RNF, which is the relative needs formula. So that's not been updated since 2013-14. So you can see the length of time that that's gone. But when you look at the moment, what they're proposing in the consultation, and it's a consultation that I will be responding to, the adult social care RNF has gone up. We benefit from that. We benefit from the children's relative needs formula, which does new home school transport formula that we benefit from. And there's highways that we benefit. So it's, that bit's the good news. So that's helpful. But if the cake's not getting any bigger, it's moving money around the system in terms of that. So from either districts or London. The other side of the equation that's not been very clear from the government yet is the dampening arrangements over the three year period and the other time, the relative resources. So the government are assuming what's called a notional council tax of £2,000. And we're about 84% of that share. So if you're a council that, below that, you will get resources taken away because you're assumed to have a different council tax base. So that's the devil in the detail. So good news in terms of managing, they've recompensed the demand that we have as a county, which is great, but the other side of the equation. So I will bring something back in terms of that with, to members as during that budget process comes through, probably in the next two or three, two or three, couple of months, if that's okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's really helpful. But I do think that we need to get the leader and our MPs to start lobbying. While the updating of the census data for the adults is going to be very helpful, I do believe that the government is going to pull resource equalisation, as Prescott did, into this. And basically, what you've done, I mean, what you sort of alluded to there, which is what I was, I was sort of thinking, is that you will see without any demand pressures, a rising council tax of some 16% over the three years, but that, and any winds will be dampened. So I think the outlook is going to be very difficult.
As usual, councillor Hardman, you're completely correct in terms of that. And I think the issue around, we will do some, as CCN, we will do some modelling because that's a strength and number that we've always done through the county council's network and Society of County Treasurers. The settlement assumes that every council will go to the maximum of 5% council tax for the next three years, regardless of what decisions they make. And that will be adjusted in the council tax figure. So if you don't, if you were a council, I'm not precluding any decisions. If you were a council that went below that, you would lose money through the resource equalisation, as councillor Hardman has just quite rightly said.
Fab, thank you. Councillor Bennett?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify the situation in terms of, sorry, in terms of investments. Having seen more than retail parks, part of Surrey council's, Surrey county council's portfolio, and it having been downgraded by about £8-10 million, I think, they paid £34 for it and they've had to write down the value of it. I'm not sure whether this council has any assets elsewhere like that. But you seem to suggest that you don't, which is really good news if that's the case.
Yeah, we haven't, no, we, the pressures that we have is just pure to revenue pressures in terms of the demand led services that we have. We haven't got any. We had a wholly owned company, which was Worcestershire Children's First. We haven't got, that's now come back in house.
That's good news.
Fab. Councillor Basti?
Hello. On overview of council draft outturn 24-25, it says corporate items. What are corporate items? But it does show that it's minus 26.5%, which is obviously a good saving. What has been saved?
Corporate items is two or three areas really. It's the treasury management activities that we have. So obviously, interest rates were higher during the year. So we benefited from that, from cash that we get from grants in advance. Good example, A38, we had that in advance. We invest that cash in money markets and we get some impact on treasury management activities, which is positive. The other area, we did what's called minimum revenue provision. So we did a review of that during the year. And our slippage in our capital programme means that we had to pay less in terms of that. So it helps the corporate centres managing the cash effectively and efficiently helps the wider corporate position. And that's very consistent with a number of local authorities during the year in terms of that. But they're the first sort of financing transactions during the year.
Cool. Cheers. Fab. Any other questions on this before? Yeah, councillor Bales?
Yeah. Sorry. Thank you, Chair. And thank you for that. Like councillor Bennett says, we're quite new to this and I'm still trying to get to grips with it because it has a different accountancy procedures to what I'm used to in business. So it's going to take us time. So please bear with me certainly. Might be a naive question, but I've got on the very first slide, the position was a net overspend of £6 million on a virtually £450 million net budget after using the 7.9 budgeted reserves. Am I right in thinking that's a 28% overspend?
When you look at the slide in terms of slide three in your packet, it's, I can't remember the name, it's 23. So when we set the budget for, we knew it was a challenging budget last year. We had a £37 million savings. When we set the budget, we used 7.9 of reserves to balance the budget. So that was in that budget figure. So when you look at our accounts, our net budget was £433. We spent £437. So it's a 1.4% overspend. We planned it was. And then, obviously, we knew we were going to spend that 7.8. And you add the 7.8 to the 6.2 and it's around a £14 million reduction in our risk reserve at the end of the year. But that's how we report it in terms of that. We knew we were going to use 7.8 million reserves to balance the budget for the start of the year. So that's been transparent all the way through the year.
Fab. Happy? Any further?
Yeah, I'm sure as we get into this, there'll be, I understand that and probably come back with some more. Thank you.
Fab. Thank you. So I'll move over to Sarah now to carry on.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm going to talk you through the financial position that's relevant to this panel. It's split into three distinct areas. We've got central service, corporate budgets that Phil has just talked about, and the communities budgets. So if we start with central services overall, in the 24-25 financial year, there was a £430k saving. There are some sort of big variances in different parts of the service. And there's three areas, property, services, commercial and research, where we did have overspends. Those were savings that were anticipated to be made that couldn't be delivered. Properties were issues around County Hall and commercial and research were going through a restructure. And those have all been resolved for the 25-26 financial year. So we won't see issues there moving forward. There were savings within legal and democratic services, again, around holding vacancies and increased fees and funding from public health. HROD, again, underspend of £563k. This was very much around holding vacancies. And they knew they would be having to make savings in 25-26, which they've achieved. They achieved them early in 24-25 and those have rolled through into 25-26, as have the savings in financial services. Again, vacancies were held, restructures done. So that, that's, what I'm trying to say is that's a one off in those 24-25 years that will be, were part of the 25-26 budgeting process. So for corporate budgets, I think Phil's just talked you through that. We've got savings within the MRP and the borrowing around capital. There was a big push last year with the support of Rachel to get on top of capital monitoring and forecasting, just so that we could be much more clear on borrowing needs moving forward. There was an overspending organisation review. That was some big savings that were put on the table around organisation, 35-37 hours, voluntary redundancy type savings that weren't achieved. For communities, again, they're showing an underspend of £560k. There were savings within libraries and savings within registrar and coroners. Registered coroners was around additional ceremony income. And they also reduced a lot of their expenditure lines, libraries. They had increased room booking income and the offer of additional services, which delivered savings. And those related to libraries unlocked, which I think Dave has alluded to also. So I'm happy to take questions on any of that.
Fab. Yeah. Before I go to questions, can I just, as much as I adore hearing all of my colleagues' voice, maybe when officers are presenting, we could keep chatter to a minimum, not looking at anyone in particular, of course. So do we have any questions? Any questions from councillor Cross?
Just a little question about the layout or formatting of these tables. Was there a glitch or an issue? It seems rather difficult to actually read. Maybe it's just me. I mean, I'm almost having to hold it at a shallow angle because the font is all stretched. And if we could just work on that, I think that would be very helpful, please.
Yeah, we'll take that away. Thank you.
Fab. Any other questions from members? Councillor Bennett?
What exactly is MRP? I mean, I think I understand what it's supposed to be, but could you actually explain it?
Okay, I'll try and do this very simply. It's called minimum revenue provision. And when you have an asset, you've got to, you've got to, there's a policy that we have. You have to basically pay into your revenue account, a charge for that to pay back the use of the assets. So it's either over, depends on MRP. It's normally over 20 life year. It depends what the length of the asset is effectively, but you have to pay that as well as interest. You have to make that provision. And it's a statutory provision that has to be really gone through and worked through in a level of detail. So that's something, that's when, if you think about, when you've got an asset, you pay the interest and you have to pay that MRP. So it's a provision for replacing the asset in terms of that.
That's what I thought. I didn't think it was manufacturing revenue production, which was the other thing that Google said it might be.
Is it worth touching on going forward perhaps for some of the technical detail to have a brief sheet with perhaps just sort of in plain English, if that's okay, just to help everyone?
Yes, that's not a problem.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions on that one? Anything from our non-member councillors? No, everyone's happy? Everyone's, yeah. Fab, I will let the officers pop off then and again, enjoy the sunshine. And I think members, we've just got to discuss the work programme going forward. But before I do, is there anything from our cabinet member? I'm sorry, I've left you out there, Rob.
Yeah, thank you, thank you Chair. Yeah, obviously there's, there's a lot of facts and figures being presented to us today and it's all about backward looking outputs. To me, it's important that scrutiny is used as a tool to improve outcomes for the organisation and for the residents of Worcestershire. And to that end, I particularly welcome councillor May's questions and comments. She fully picked up on that, this is used as a tool to improve outcomes, so thank you for that. However, what the Lord giveth, the Lord taketh away. And I don't agree with councillor May's assertion that we've inherited some sort of financial nirvana. I think there are challenges ahead and I think there's challenges in the past that could have been met in a better way to alleviate, alleviate some of the problems of going forwards. But yeah, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Fab, and I, that's great. Thank you. Yep, you, I believe you're free to go as well with the officers?
Yes.
Yeah. And then we're just staying to the work, so we'll let everyone go. Thank you, everyone. Okay, colleagues, thank you. Just a quick reminder, we are still being webcast, so yeah, big smiles. So moving on to the work programme, we've got a couple of things that were mentioned during our induction session. I don't know if we do want to look at factoring in. Obviously, the caveat to all of this is if county hall is on our next agenda, I think we're all in agreement that that will be our primary focus for that session. So this is perhaps a, an option B in case it's not ready for October. So what was raised in induction, we've got a revised workforce strategy, which I think Karen Hued mentioned. We've got a fit for purpose contracts towards unitary status. We're trying to remember, cast our brains, I can't remember the detail on this, if anyone can remember that. No? Okay, we'll get rid of that one. And then Andrew, I think you raised the Worcestershire volunteers, didn't you, that you wanted that factoring in, how the VCS is funded or audited? Yeah, so we're making sure.
So it's already, Worcestershire volunteers is already an item on the work programme. So we could just add how it's funded and audited as a, an inclusion.
Fab, yeah. Councillor May and then councillor Bennet?
Yes, thank you very much indeed, Chairman. Could we please have a review of the case management as well that we do for our casework as, as members?
Yep, I'm sure we can pop that one.
Can I just check, do you mean the member portal? Is that?
It's, it's, yeah, but it's, it's the case management. So when we've got environmental issues, we raise and a whole plethora of issues, Samantha, we need a review of how that's operating. And also then we can look at where we've got pitfalls within it. Thank you.
Councillor Bennet?
Yeah, I just think that the projections forward as to where staff are going to be, resources and things like that, were kind of covered in what you've said. But that does need to be part of what we look at. It may be that that creeps into the timetable bit by bit, but obviously we're only going to be doing this for two or three years, aren't we, maximum, depending on the timetable for what's going on. And there may be some crises that arise depending on what happens to the way that the structure is going to be afterwards.
So it's my understanding, and I'm looking at Samantha potentially to nod if I'm correct, that we have a submission coming up in the next few months for unitary proposal. So it may be worth addressing that point after that submission's gone in, so we might know a bit more of the groundwork we've requested and then bring in the relevant people.
That's correct. It's the submission due, I think, on the 28th of November. But also this work plan is flexible, so what you're making suggestions about today may well change next month. So you're not necessarily agreeing a work programme that you're, you're actually going to do everything on it because you'll do whatever the priorities are and bring those to those relevant, relevant meetings.
So if anyone, no one else have any urgent ones? I think I'm quite confident in saying that our next focus then will be county hall with a proviser that that may change. And if it does, we can circulate amongst ourselves. I'm being nudged?
You are. There are three additional items mentioned at your induction session. Libraries unlocked phase three and refresh of library strategy, strategy if you wish to add that. Implementation of the archives and archaeology strategy and responding to legislation changes in respect of registration services. They cropped up at induction, which we noted, so we can add those if you'd like us to.
Yeah, I think that'd be important and any, any reason to go down to look at the archives and the archaeology, I would, I happily run with that one. But yeah, if there's nothing else, obviously if anyone wants anything added or anything changes, feel free to reach out. Well, I thank you all for your time. Thank you so much. Enjoy the rest of your day.